First of all, thank you David and Lund for joining us. We really appreciate your time. My name is Yori Seeger and this is Dana Seeger. We are the co-founders of the School of Visual Philosophy, which is an art school and art hub on the Alameda. And we focus on really changing how our society perceives artists. We want them to be a really integral part in what we do in our world because we believe that art is the universal language that can make a lot of great change. And we're really excited tonight to hear what you guys think about art and how that plays into politics and economy and life in general. And it is also my great pleasure to announce Amanda Teller-Rossin. I've known her probably personally for about a year now, but I've known of her for longer than that. As I continue to work with you, I am continuously impressed and I appreciate all the work that you do for San Jose. I am in fact probably, I think it's a fifth generation San Jose citizen and fourth business owner, fourth generation business owner. The first artist business owner in my family. But I really appreciate all the work that you do. And because I didn't want to get it wrong, I'm actually going to read a little bit, so I apologize for that. But Amanda Rossin has been working in the arts and cultural field for 10 years. She is a board member of the San Jose nonprofit Local Color and the Chair of Gen Arts, a program in Silicon Valley Creeds. Amanda currently works for the women-owned small business public art firm Art Builds Community. Is a proud independent high school and UC Berkeley alum and a core member of the San Jose Arts Advocates. And for those of you joining us tonight, this program is put on by the San Jose Arts Advocates. If you have not yet heard of us, I'd be surprised since you're here. But look us up. San Jose Arts Advocates is dedicated to education and advocacy for the arts. And we strongly believe that arts is a great way to help our society improve in many, many, many ways, whether it be through economics or through understanding our diverse cultural city. Well, we strongly encourage you to get involved with the San Jose Arts Advocates. We work really hard on building community and education. And I'll turn it over to Dana.
Thanks, Yori. I'm going to introduce a mighty Mike McGee, who was our second moderator tonight. And he's a well-traveled stand-up poet from San Jose, California. But he's hoboed his way around the United States, Canada and throughout Europe since 2002. McGee has performed comedy and poetry in thousands of cities and towns for millions of years. But years, not years. McGee was appointed poet laureate of Santa Clara County for 2018 and 2019. And I think that's really cool because I am actually a 2020 and 2021 artist laureate. So go Santa Clara County. And he is one of the best-known and liked people in the world of chatty writers. So hopefully he'll keep chatting us down and let you guys talk. So without further ado, Amanda, you can take it away with our first question.
Thank you so much, Yori and Dana. Totally appreciate you guys very much for being able to introduce us this evening. I'm going to introduce our candidate, David Cohen. So David is a high-tech engineer and has managed a global R&amp;D group. For the past 14 years, he has served as an elected member of the Berriessa Union School District Board of Trustees. He has also served on the San Jose Library Commission, including two years as chair. David earned his undergraduate degree from Cornell University and his PhD from the University of California at Berkeley. Go Bears! He lives with his wife and their two kids, both products of the Berriessa schools. They share their home with two dogs and two cats. So I'm going to now pass it on to Mike to do our next introduction.
Thank you, Amanda. It's a pleasure getting to co-moderate this forum with you tonight. And I want to also thank the, I want to thank Dana and Yori at School of Visual Philosophy. They are a jewel in the crown that is the arts in San Jose. Our council member Lund Deep first ran for San Jose City Council in 2015 special election, but lost by 13 votes. He ran again in 2016 and won by 12 votes. I guess those folks figured their stuff out, huh? Since taking office, he has focused on economic development, affordable housing, transportation and land use. He chairs San Jose's Smart Cities and Services Committee and represents San Jose on the executive boards of the Valley Transportation Authority Board and the Association of Bay Area Governments. He earned dual bachelor degrees from the University of California at San Diego in political science, international relations and history, and received his law degree from the University of the Pacific McGeorge School of Law. Please welcome Lund Deep and David Cohen. And now I'm going to read off all the ground rules for today's forum. The San Jose Arts Advocates core team and our moderators have curated a series of questions designed to open a conversation with the candidates so we can get to know them and they can get to know us. We also encourage you to post questions in the Zoom Q&amp;A or in the comments on the Facebook Live feed. We're streaming now at School of VP at and at San Jose Arts. We will also ask members of the audience to share their experiences in San Jose's creative community. This is an opportunity for the candidates to rest their weary vocal cords and listen to our experiences. It's important that you engage. Please note foul, false, self-serving, belligerent, derogatory, sexist, racist, fascist, or otherwise hateful and/or hurtful commentary of any kind will not be tolerated. You will be immediately removed from the forum and banned from all future SJA events or until such time as you learn to be a fully functioning adult member of a loving, inclusive and empathetic society. Finally, we're grateful to have so many participants joining us tonight. And it's very likely that we will not have time to get to all of your wonderful questions and comments. If you want to make sure the candidates hear your voice, please add a note to the chat or send an email to hello@sjartsadvocates.org. Once again, that's hello@sjartsadvocates.org. We will share all of your questions with the candidates and post any follow-up responses on all of our usual channels. By the way, we also hosted a forum with the candidates in District 6, representing Buena Vista, Sherman Oaks, Shasta-Hanchit, Rose Garden and Willow Glen. You will find a recording on our YouTube channel. And as always, we encourage you to visit sjartsadvocates.org to sign up for our mailing list, get important advocacy alerts and learn how you can support our efforts. And now I will turn over the first question to Amanda.
All right. Thank you for your patience, gentlemen, this evening. Your first question, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask it first and then I will ask Councilmember Lund to respond first. You are in a fascinating district with the future development of North San Jose, the change of the Berriessa Flea Market, Albezo, North San Jose neighborhood developments and traditional Berriessa neighborhoods. How will you use the arts sector to ensure important placekeeping in the course of future development in Albezo and Berriessa Flea Market? So you're not timed. So we're going to give you the opportunity to have a conversation and then we will ask David to also provide his response.
Awesome. So thank you very much for the invitation. You know, often these forums on the campaign trail are centered around issues that we think a lot about in the course of government work, housing, transportation, economic development. So I look forward to this, tonight's discussion because it's framed as a discussion. And I won't pretend to have put so much time as a council member towards the arts. And so I'm looking forward to hearing and engaging and learning and also sharing some of my own thoughts. But to your question, I do think that art has a cohesive nature. And you're right, there's a lot of potential development happening in our neck of the woods here in North San Jose, particularly at the urban village near the Bart Station and you know, whatever comes to Albezo in the future. We've already seen that art can be grounding. We have a state-of-the-art water pump up in Albezo to prevent flooding. And around there on the walls outside is a beautiful artwork depicting the history of Albezo. So that's, I think, something that the city is very proud of. You know, there's a lot more to happen at the urban village in Berriessa, but already at the Bart Station, if you get off and in the front there, there is public art. And you know, I think as we look at the future of the flea market and potentially moving that, there is a lot of room to use art to preserve the history and the, you know, the significance of the flea market as a famous part of San Jose. So I think that the opportunity is certainly there. And I don't think for a moment that that's something that we at City Hall would hand on down. I really think that's a community discussion and inviting community members and artists and viewpoints about what we want to see there.
Thank you so much for your response. And David?
Thank you for hosting this forum and for that great first question because I was just having a conversation last week about how North San Jose is developing without a, really a sense of place and how there's a lot of potential to really make up a place out of North San Jose. You know, it's really important to incorporate art and entertainment venues into development as you build out new part, new areas in cities. And it's not just new areas of cities, but you know, we have, our city of San Jose is a unique place because it's not really just one downtown. It's a collection of neighborhoods. And really each neighborhood has its own character and we ought to be celebrating that character through neighborhood art by creating gateways into each of those neighborhoods and having art on, you know, the light poles and things that represent those neighborhoods. And we should really be doing that as we build out North San Jose. And I was just talking last week about placemaking in North San Jose. And even temporary pop-up entertainment venues, you know, even if we don't do something permanent, we want places where people who are going to move into North San Jose, don't just think of North San Jose as a dormitory, right? A place where they're living near transportation, going to work, coming home and then needing to get in their car to go downtown or somewhere else for entertainment, but a place where they feel like they actually have a community to live in, where it might be a gallery, some galleries, or it might be a place where there's a concert in the park and walking trails that are connecting into the network of trails we have here in San Jose. There's a lot of potential in that part of the city. So I think we can do a lot as we develop out North San Jose.
Yes, I think you both speak on the idea of placekeeping and placemaking. North San Jose has a really strong, I think, history and strong group of community there and that is diverse. And you know, there's a, there's a potential, right, for really growing the placemaking and placekeeping, particularly in, I think, Albezo, as you said, Councilmember Lund, that there's, there's already been an effort with the public art. I actually know exactly what piece you're talking about and I think it's fantastic. And also with the, with idea of gateways, you know, we have places like in Willow Glen where there is a gateway and we know that it's a neighborhood. So I think that's something to think, to really concentrate on moving forward, the idea of North San Jose being its own neighborhood and having an identity that the community can really hold on to. So thank you for your responses on that. Mike, you want to move on to the next question?
Yes. And I will, I will ask David first and then, and then Councilmember Lund will answer second. Question is, a private percent for public art policy is currently being studied by city staff for council consideration sometime in the next term. Mayor Liccardo, Councilmember Davis, as well as Councilmembers Carrasco, Esparza and Peralas all voted to prioritize this matter for consideration. Such a policy would potentially require private developers to contribute 1% of their development costs for the creation of onsite public art or other cultural amenities in San Jose. Long-established familiar, similar policies already exist in other cities in our region across the nation, such as Cupertino, Los Altos, Milpitas, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, Redwood City, San Francisco, San Mateo, Los Angeles, Tampa, San Diego, Seattle, Tempe and Scottsdale. Do you support the adoption of this policy? And I turn to you, Dave.
Yeah, I certainly, I certainly support studying the idea, which is what is being proposed right now. And I certainly think it's a good idea. I, I think that we want more public art and we want attractive development. My feeling is that good developers will want attractive development as well and will want to dedicate some of their, the cost of what they're building to building art as part of their project because the more attractive the development, the more profitable their developments will be, is my belief. I think people, you know, that people are going to want to live in a place that has some centerpieces, that has venues for art, that again, that even has these kinds of places for performance, for gathering. There's a lot of creative ways to spend that 1%. And I don't think it'll be a stretch to be able to have these, this 1% spent by developers on these projects. So I think it's a great idea. And I don't think it'll be that hard to implement, but I love to, I'm looking forward to the outcome of that study.
Councilmember Deep?
Yeah, so I, I'm open to the idea. I, you know, the idea is simply studying it. I'm not against at all 1% for art. I guess what I'm more conscious about is the timing of it and when we implement it. You know, San Jose is in a very difficult spot when it comes to these finances. We rely a lot on the jobs and the developments to supply the tax and the revenue. And we've seen in recent years, just months even, we've passed Measure E, which has a tax on the sale of, you know, commercial real estate above a certain million-dollar threshold, $2 million threshold to fund affordable housing. Just a few weeks ago, we passed a commercial linkage fee for the same purpose. And not San Jose, but statewide, there's a discussion right now about Prop 15 and split roll on Prop 13, also looking at commercial spaces. So 1% in and of itself is not a concern of mine and I would wholeheartedly support that. I think in the context of everything, on top of everything else, I do share some reservations about that implementation. So, so there.
Would you mind going a little further into those reservations?
So it's simply, of all the cities that you stated, and I haven't studied all of them, you know, Milpitas and Santa Clara and Tempe and so on and so forth. But I would imagine that none of them have the hurdle that San Jose has right now. We are a bedroom community. You know, every morning our population shrinks because people leave for Milpitas and Santa Clara and nearby cities to work. And they spend their lunch money there, they do their errands there and they come home to sleep. And you know, once, once you dig into city finances and how cities are run, the nature of funding makes it that cities compete with each other for tax dollars. We don't get a check from Sacramento or from DC every year based on our population to take care of our needs. We have to compete with Santa Clara or Milpitas or San Francisco for these companies. And because of that, you know, traffic is really messed up in the Bay Area. Imagine if we were, we were to redesign the Bay Area, I would think that you would put the jobs in San Francisco and Oakland and San Jose and not in Mountain View or Palo Alto. But we have what we have. And, and so San Jose is competing to try to attract more, more jobs, more commercial activity to the area, to fund better roads and libraries and parks, and yes, the arts. But as it stands right now, San Jose is very much an afterthought. And we need more housing, more affordable housing, housing of all sorts, definitely. But housing takes more from, takes revenue, demand services, police and fire and sewers and roads. Whereas commercial buildings, they contribute to the general fund, they contribute to our coffers. And that is a very delicate balance because, for instance, the city of Santa Clara, Cupertino, they have more jobs than housing. And so they rely on San Jose, they benefit when we do more of this stuff. And they just take the windfall of the commercial taxes and they leave San Jose wanting more.
I just, just say though, I think, you know, times like this require some creative thinking. I mean, people are going to be working differently, people are going to be living differently. We're in a state where people are not necessarily going to be commuting the same way. People are going to be working at home. Commercial buildings will look differently. Mixed-use developments will be more attractive to people. So I think we, you know, we continue to kind of live under the paradigm that we lived under before. And one of the reasons why San Jose may not be as attractive is that we continue to kind of build traditional, old, unattractive places. And I think that if we were willing to invest a little bit and push for places that made San Jose more attractive place, we could, we could invite and bring more development into our city. And I, so I don't think it's ever the wrong time to be thinking about doing something that's going to make our city more of an arts destination, more of a destination for people so that we're on the map. So you know, while certainly we should see what the study will say, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't want standard hurdles to get in our way of investing in what will be better for our community.
Yeah, and I, I'd like to just add, and I'm assuming that you both know, but these developers, they're, they're asked so much, right, of all other cities. And so, you know, as much as we would be asking for a private percent for public art, whether that be 1% or something different, it's not as, as if it hasn't been asked in others. And that it might even be having similar problems as, as our city when it comes to being a bedroom city. So it's just something that, since we have you here, I'd like to share that as a reminder to think about and consider as we move forward. And I just also kind of put an emphasis on that, you know, this is, this is, this would be, this could potentially be a private percent, private percent for public art. But it also can be, if a developer decides to not do the art onsite, can be a fund that's created for the arts, right? So that's also a bigger picture to think about in regards to maybe later questions that we'll be asking around supporting the arts financially. So just wanted to kind of throw that in there before we move forward.
Do you want me to respond or we can go on either way?
Yeah, we can go on, that's fine, if you have something.
So, I mean, on that point, I, I think my mentality is that there is, I agree that nearby cities are asking for it. I guess the argument would be that there is a, an edge to coming to San Jose, trying to attract more of that development that we need when there, there's not that ask here, right? So we're competing not just with our neighboring cities, but we're competing globally in this world economy now. So you can build your commercial space or whatever in the Bay Area or you could go to Portland or Austin or Europe or somewhere. And so we're not just competing with moving five miles to get out of a fee, although it could be that. If it could be just moving five miles to get out of Santa Clara into San Jose and for whatever reason the cost was, was lower, I think that's to San Jose's advantage. But what we have done in San Jose and what I've pushed for and advocated for, at least in North San Jose, is creating a point system where developments come in and they are given benefits when they build certain amenities onsite. So public artwork being one of them. You know, onsite retail or certain things that we want and getting them to do it themselves rather than collecting a fee and, you know, supporting art some other way. But in North San Jose, at least, we do have a policy where developments come in and the projects are screened and they are awarded points, the more that they do themselves and they include these things onsite.
Right, yes.
Would you like to respond, David? You're muted.
David, muted.
No, I say, let's move on. I like.
Okay. That's a great conversation. Thank you both. I think I am the next question, Mike.
You are.
All right. So this is going to be a little bit longer than what we've been talking about so far. So let's see. The San Jose arts and cultural sector consists of many small businesses. Just looking at the nonprofit portion of that sector, it generates economic activity of more than $200 million annually, creating $100 million in household income to local residents. The arts are an important economic driver supporting local restaurants and hospitality businesses. The cultural grants program is supported by only about 15% of the hotel tax fund, the transit occupancy tax. This year, the fund plummeted 70%, a $5 million cut, the cultural grant, to the cultural grants program. City Council dedicated $2 million of one-time CARES funds to help offset this heavy blow. So this is a two-part question. One, the first question is, would you support an increase in the portion of the hotel tax fund to 30% for the cultural grants program? We'll do it with that one first and then we'll go to the next question. So David, you can go first on that.
Okay. I mean, the answer to this question, you know, to me, it's immaterial. I mean, I think funding arts become, is a question of priority overall and where that funding comes from. I mean, I think it's important to have the transit occupancy tax and use it for this purpose, but to me, it's still a council overall priority about how you, about whether you make arts a priority for your city and whether you backfill when you have issues with certain funds or not. And so to me, in times like this, you decide about whether this is a priority and I think cities need to make it a priority. You know, back in the, in the last recession, I was on a school board and many school districts in the county cut music completely, right, at the elementary school level. Our district is pretty much the last remaining school district to still offer elementary music starting at third grade. We still have instrumental music for third grade and up. And as a result, our middle school music program is still one of the best middle school music programs in the, the area, if not the state. And I worked really hard to try to prioritize budget during that time to keep our music program. And it was not an easy fight. We had people coming and saying that it was an elite program, it wasn't necessary, you know, you, you, you know, you're saving it only for a small fraction. There were a lot of battles over keeping arts in schools during that time. But you have to make decisions about keeping a diverse set of programming for your students, just like a city has to make decisions about whether arts are going to be an important element of a vibrant city. And so to me, you know, you can say that certain percentages of different funds have to be earmarked, but when you get into difficult times, you're going to have to make those difficult decisions about what gets preserved and what gets saved. And you save arts during the difficult times by digging deep because you're going to need those arts, you know, when, when you recover and people are going to need, you know, to keep the city on the map, to keep people occupied, to keep, as you said, people employed, to have a place for people to come, to attract people to your city. There's a lot of reasons why you want art preserved. And so to me, the bigger question really is, you know, what does the council prioritize and how do you figure out how to save important things like the arts during those difficult times?
I want to just have a clarify, clarify that for a second. So are you, I want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly. Are you saying that you agree to an increase? Or are you saying that you would, would you support some other type of funding component, whether that's from like a general fund effort or looking for different?
Yeah, I think I'm saying I need to evaluate where that, I mean, to me, I support increasing funding for art in the city. I don't necessarily know whether it matters in my mind that it's an increase from the TOT or that it's a, you know, from another place in the fund. I mean, you know, the TOT, things get divided up and whether it's from TOT or other places. You know, I find that, that those are, those are more academic discussions than, than practical discussions. But I'm, you know, I'm okay with, you know, in good times, saying that we're going to use the TOT more for arts and putting a higher percentage into arts, I think, is a reasonable discussion to have. And I think that that's, that's something I could support. The hard time is going to be the next year or two when we know our transit occupancy tax is low and we're still going to have to invest, whether it's CARES Act money or other kinds of extra general fund money to preserve some of these, these arts programs that are important for the fabric of our city.
Right, okay. Thank you, appreciate that. And Councilmember Deep?
So I'm, forgive me, I'm unclear where the, the rest of the TOT money would go. So you're asking for an increase of 15%. That in and of itself, you know, I'm, I'm open to. The real question is what you're asking me to cut?
So I can give you a breakdown really quick. So 40% of 100% of the TOT goes to the general fund. 30% goes to the convention and visitors bureau, so that's Team San Jose. And then the remaining 30% goes to the Office of Cultural Affairs. So not only does it go to the Office of Cultural Affairs, but half, 50% of that 30% pays for the administration and the other half pays for grants. So really 30% does not go to the, to the, goes to a grants program. Only half of that 30% goes to grants program and the other half pays for administrative costs, which is really the only department that is paid through a tax. So that's another thing to think about. Do we move the Office of Cultural Affairs administration outside and to its own department and come out of the general fund to support it?
Right. So, so with that breakdown, I mean, off the top of my head, I, I'm open to finding new revenue sources. I'm very reluctant to, to do anything with the, with the general fund, to make an ongoing commitment. Right now, every year we do the budget and one of the, the rules that has been very clear, made very clear to all the council members is there are no ongoing, no ongoing expenses out of the general fund. So, you know, we can, we can have our crosswalks or our programs that we like and we dedicate it, but then we're not even hiring staff, ongoing staff, creating new, new positions, right? Because the, of the economic nature of uncertainty of what's looking ahead. And also because we have a lot of unpaid obligations that haven't materialized in the immediacy. And I'm speaking particularly about pension obligations to retired employees. So we do rely on our general fund very much. We have reserve funds and such, but you know, cutting a slice out of the general fund to commit to an ongoing program, I think is something that I aspire to. I would very much like San Jose to be in a place where we're financially strong enough where, you know, yeah, here's 15% arts, uh, or anything else, childcare, helping parents with, with the childcare or any other, uh, you know, social welfare program or to make the city a more enlivened place. Uh, but in this moment, um, we're, we're on precarious financial ground. Uh, so we need that general fund and, and I, I think I would continue on with the, the mindset that, um, you know, one-time uses are, are fine, but, uh, no ongoing commitments for, for the short-term future.
Thank you. And I'm gonna ask the second question and I kind of already asked it, but I'm going to just do it more times so that we both have an opportunity to answer. So during the last recession, uh, the Office of Cultural Affairs administrative costs were moved out of the general fund. So it was in the general fund. And would you support moving, and into the hotel tax fund? So would you support moving the OCA administrative costs back to the general fund? And we can go with David first on that question.
I mean, I guess my answer is similar to what I said before. I mean, it, to me, it's the, you know, these are all important expenses that need to be paid, whether it's out of the TOT or other places. And you, you know, to me, you use, you use a fund like the TOT first to pay for things that are somewhat related to that, to that X revenue source. And that revenue source is tourism and, and arts. And so you pay for things related to tourism, arts out of that fund. Um, and then, you know, if you need more from other places, you go find other places. So I, I mean, I, I don't have a strong feeling that we would move that, that, um, expense out of that fund. But it, again, this comes from an overall review of all the things we feel are prioritized as spending in the city and whether we need to increase, um, other spending out of the TOT and therefore move that back to the general fund. So I, you know, without doing that overall review, I can't, I can't really make that call tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Councilmember?
Yeah, so if this happened during the recession, I, I, I would be reluctant because if anything, I feel that moving, uh, the, the Office of Cultural Affairs back into the general fund would put it in more danger. I understand that because of the pandemic, tourism is down, hotels are, are sitting empty and the arts have taken quite a hit or the office has taken a hit because of it. Uh, but right now you have a dedicated source of funding. I, I agree that the, that source of funding is, um, dependent upon factors outside our control. Uh, but once you put it into the general fund, you're basically asking to recompete, uh, for those dollars every year uh, against other pressing needs that, that may come up differently, uh, depending on what happens in front of, if we have another flood, wildfire relief, um, so on and so forth. So I, I would not wanna see the Office of Cultural Affairs, uh, have to basically be, be put on the, the, the weighing, uh, you know, the way against other needs every year. But to keep it in TOT, um, it is a fluctuating fund, but is a dedicated source that is solely yours. And, and I think that's actually a good place to be.
Great, thank you. Um, and I just want to, um, this all, this kind of speaks to what we were talking about earlier and mentioned the idea of a possible, um, art fund, uh, out of a private percent for public art. And they just would encourage both of you to, um, to think about that. And maybe even we can, uh, San Jose Arts Advocates can kind of talk to you both about that at some point in the future and kind of give you what we, what we already have studied, um, in, in to support that, that, um, that effort. Mike?
Yes, um, before I ask the next, next question, I wanna thank, uh, both of our guests tonight for, um, for being so, so forward and I, I do appreciate them both being here. I also want to remind our audience watching at home, uh, that you can type up any questions that you might have for our candidates. You can type into the chat either on Facebook or in Zoom, uh, and we will get to those questions a little bit later. Uh, so my next question, uh, and, uh, Councilmember Deep, you will be the first to answer and then we'll turn to David Cohen. Uh, your question is this, would you support the creation of an artists-in-residence program to place cross-disciplinary artists within city departments to cultivate new problem-solving approaches to some of our most in- intractable problems? If no, why? If yes, how?
Yeah, so I, I'm not quite clear on, on what would happen with, with such a thing, although the idea of a artist-in-residence intrigues me. Um, and, and maybe not in every single department, but maybe one or two at the city and then they could help multiple departments. Um, you know, I, I do like this idea of thinking out of the box. I, I, I do think that there is some merit to, uh, having a fresh set of eyes. Um, somebody who, who is not a bureaucrat, somebody who's not formally trained in the problems that we deal with every day, uh, come in and, and take a look and, and maybe see something from a different perspective that, that for many years that we haven't seen. So, so I am open to, to that notion. Having said that, I'm, I'm not quite clear and perhaps a bit skeptical on what, uh, well, how artists-in-residence could actually help, to your question, solve the, solve the city's issues in, in a more efficient or imaginative way. Uh, so to me, arts, public art, you know, brings soul to the city, it builds communities and, and it connects us. Every day I, I'm dealing with, uh, moving a homeless encampment or, uh, trying to tow an abandoned vehicle, uh, making sure the roads are, are paved, you know, uh, in a way that, that people's cars aren't being broken because of potholes, uh, making sure weeds are cut, uh, you know, regularly in the, the grasses mode. Gophers are taken out of parks, uh, so on and so forth. So, so, you know, comparing the, uh, what I, what my office gets, uh, complaints about every, every day or regularly with the idea that, you know, an artist, um, classically trained, you know, somebody in the humanities can come in and will, will have some sort of, uh, better way to address those. I, I'm unsure, but I'm, I'm open to it. And, um, because I, I do believe that, that arts, uh, and artists, uh, you know, bring something to the table. Uh, and if it's the question about, you know, building communities and, uh, including or, or trying to, uh, draw more people into the civic discussion about, you know, council meetings and decision-making, I, I believe that's, that's certainly a possibility. Uh, but again, uh, I, I don't see how an artist can, can get us to, uh, mow the lawn more regularly at our parks.
Okay. Uh, David?
And i- i- it's interesting, back in my early days in engineering, um, before I was at, uh, in, in Silicon Valley, I actually worked, uh, at, at Clorox where we made home cleaning products. And I got, uh, we, we brought, they brought in training on, uh, creative problem solving and, um, taught us about, you know, brainstorming, outside-the-box thinking. And what we were, you know, trained to do was, was think about, was accept the craziest ideas in the room, you know? Where, where everybody started with a problem and, and let people brainstorm and, and didn't immediately act like an engineer and say why that couldn't work, but tried to build off of the, the ideas that, you know, sounded crazy. And we came up with better ideas as a result of that and, and better, more interesting projects and products. So there's a lot you can learn by thinking, by having people who haven't looked at a problem and haven't done it the same way. And I, I find that in, in city bureaucracies, in government a lot, we're often solving problems the same way over and over and over again, rather than thinking about things in a different way. Um, and, you know, I, I, I was so excited by that, that I spent several years actually reteaching that creative problem-solving class to other new engineers that were coming in because I thought that it was a really interesting way to start solving problems in, in the tech field. Um, and I, I see the promise of, you know, bringing in people who are, who are gonna be outside-the-box thinkers. And I, I think, I actually think there's probably a lot of grants out there and things for this kind of a program where you, you know, i- it's not even necessarily a general fund expense, but, you know, uh, you know, an artist-in-residence program could be paid for creatively, um, in a city like San Jose where you bring people in and you find, uh, sources of funding out there and, and you, you, you see how in a few instances you might actually find some creative ways to do things and then you, you know, expand that across the city a little bit. So, yeah, I think it'd be an interesting thing to try.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Amanda?
Yes, so we're gonna move on to the next question. All right, um, Cultural Connection, San Jose's cultural plan was approved by the city council in 2011 and sought to place arts and culture in the larger context of the city's overall plan for its future growth and development. The plan expires this year. Will you work to secure the updating of this plan in the year ahead? If no, why not? And if so, how? Councilmember Deep?
Yeah, I, I, I don't foresee that, uh, the plan is on the chopping block. Uh, I would imagine it would be updated. Um, I, I know that my colleagues on the council, uh, are, are supportive of the arts. Although, you know, we may debate the 1% or not, but I think everyone appreciates, um, you know, music and theater and all the ways that, um, art can, can create place, a sense of place in, in our community. So, uh, to the extent that we have a plan and, and, you know, we will, uh, renew it, I, I'm certain we'll look at it with new eyes and, and try to update it to 2020 standards. Um, you know, to, to reflect the, the, the new time era that we're living in and with, with social distancing and, um, and, and everything. So I, 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 I'm certain that, that, well, I could commit to myself that, that I'll support it. Uh, and, and I'm almost all but certain that the council will as well.
Thank you. And David?
You know, at a lot of these forums, there's a lot of discussion and, and, and debate between, you, you know, uh, Lon, Lon and myself about, uh, things where we disagree or divide on the council. But I don't think there's probably much disagreement about the importance of arts and culture in the city. Um, I, I think the council, uh, will agree and everybody knows the importance of, of culture, especially in a city as diverse as San Jose and needing to preserve that, that diversity and showcase that diversity and, and showcase our various neighborhoods, I think is really important. And I, you know, I see it happening now in our neighborhoods. There's, there's committees that many of, you know, my neighbors are involved in locally about, you know, finding, about designing new pieces of public art to improve our highway underpasses and make them more attractive and upgrade our, our murals locally and that, that represent the various cultures in the various neighborhoods. Um, you know, we see the importance in our schools to celebrate our multicultural diversity, um, where we celebrate the fact that, you know, we have 50 languages spoken in our school district and people, and all the, and we, people come in their native dress and share, uh, the different cultures and foods and, and, and dances from their countries. And I, I think people in our city enjoy that. And I think our council agrees that that would be an important thing for our city to be able to do. Uh, you know, and I think that, that, you know, certainly I support continuing to do things like that, Citywide.
Thank you both. Appreciate that you support that moving forward. And, um, we're gonna go on to Mike and I believe that would be our last question before we move on to, uh, community questions.
Yes, so, uh, the, uh, and I will ask, uh, we'll start with David and then we'll move, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Deep. The arts have the power to convene people, build connections around shared joy. And as we've seen in the responses people have had to the conditions of isolation in the pandemic, the arts have the power to heal. What is one idea you have to improve, enhance and support arts and culture in your district? Please consider a range of possible partners and stakeholders. David?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if your question is specifically referring to, under the current environment about healing while people are distanced and that's a tough question. I mean, you know, I think people are tired of having to sit in front of a computer and do things on Zoom. So I'm not sure that a solution that involves watching cultural events over Zoom is a, is a healthy answer. Um, you know, uh, one thing I'm really excited about in our district is a project where we're going to restore the mural on our community center that represents the Valley of Hearts Delight, which is what Bariessa used to be. And it's a really beautiful piece of art here. And, you know, we're bringing the, uh, you know, some artists in to, to touch it up and, and, you know, make it vibrant again. And so just doing, I think, some of those local things that people in the community can see and, and, and look at it their own time and space, I think is helpful. I think that involving children in our schools and art is a good thing. Um, you know, we, we, we did that with a project here where we wanted to create a sense of place in one of our gateways from Bart Station where we were hanging the banners along, uh, Bariessa Road. And the idea was that students would design those banners representing the community here and the cultural diversity. And so, you know, getting students and their families involved in some of those art projects and being able to display those throughout the community, I think is a good thing. So I think we can find ways to showcase local artists in creative ways. You know, our school district, every year has an art show in May where we hang art from every school in, in our central district office. And all the families come and look at the art and, and we didn't, we didn't skip that this May. We, all the students and teachers submitted the best works of art and we posted those online, including student videos and, and pictures of all the sculptures and paintings and let students, let all the families browse and look through all those, those family art. And so I think there's ways to continue to showcase local artists and local art. And I think we ought to continue doing things like that.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Lon?
Yeah, so I, um, it's interesting. I, I think that one way to promote art i- is to, it kind of goes back to this whole larger discussion we're having about, um, equity and race and, and, and all, all of this. Because I think there, there is, there's a spectrum, right? On, on the one hand, you know, as Americans, we share a common creed and, and there is this expectation of assimilation. Um, and on the other spectrum, there is this, you know, uh, I am insert whatever, I'm Vietnamese or I'm, I'm Latinx or I'm, you know, African-American and I'm proud of that, that, that heritage I bring that, uh, you know, to the melting pot or to the, the more modern, uh, metaphor, which is what we're a salad bowl. We each bring flavor and value to it and we're not just melding into one. Uh, but I, I think that there is this, um, this, this conflict, uh, in communities of color where, yeah, do you wanna downplay your history? Do you wanna downplay your culture to, to kind of fit in? And, and I know that, you know, growing up, I went through some of that. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm Lon Deep today, but, but in college, I, I said, just call me Ethan. Uh, this, this notion that like, you know, you don't wanna be the other, you don't wanna be foreign, right? So, uh, to the extent that, um, we're able to, to instill this, this sense of pride in, in our, our schools and in our schools, our, our children, our communities, um, early on. So, uh, they, they don't feel this, this, this need to kind of fit in because they know that they, they are here and they are part of the fabric of the community. There's no fitting in to be, to be had. Um, you know, maintaining culture, uh, maintaining language, um, you know, as, as a Vietnamese-American, uh, you know, I don't have a family, but, but I, I, I'm at that age now where I'm thinking about it. And like, uh, I want my kids to, to speak Vietnamese and, and I'm thinking, how does that happen? Uh, when, when we're, we're so far away from Vietnam, right? And the community here, my peers, 30-something-year-old Vietnamese-Americans, uh, for better or worse, can't really speak Vietnamese. They, they can order off a menu, uh, but, but, you know, when I'm meeting a peer, we're, we're speaking in English and, and we'd kind of joke in Vietnamese a bit, but we can't really convey, uh, thoughts about philosophy or, or politics, um, in Vietnamese, not fluently. And, and that's a problem. And I'm, and I'm sure that's can be said for, for the Chinese community or, or maybe the Mexican community and other communities. And so to the extent that we somehow create an environment where, uh, they, they feel proud celebrating it, uh, celebrating their culture. And in celebrating and living it, you're able to introduce that, uh, to, to other, uh, cultures. I think that, that is something that we can, we can push for. Um, you know, I remember going to school not, uh, as a child and, and bringing a pork bun to school for lunch. And at that time, uh, there wasn't the terminology for pork bun. I didn't, and, and so my teacher just said, oh, he brought like a round sandwich. Um, and, and, and that's what I call it, is like a, a sandwich in the shape of a ball. Uh, so there is a sense of, um, trying to fit in, trying to not be so Asian, not being so ethnic or not being so whatever else. And, um, if we can assuage that, make everyone feel comfortable in their own skin, quite literally, um, I, I think you can, you can push art. And, and it wouldn't take a lot of, of money necessarily to, to do that, to celebrate that because the people are just proud and, and, you know, I know that, uh, in early October, there's the Mid-Autumn, uh, Moon Festival that's celebrated in, in Vietnam, China and Korea and other parts of Asia. Um, you know, just doing that and then just having, you know, like, you know, Latinx kids or African-Americans or white kids come uh, and, and see what all the lanterns are about and, and like eat the, eat the mooncakes and all that. I think that is sharing culture and celebrating art, uh, i- in a very organic way. Um, and, and it could just take some council grants of a couple hundred dollars to rent a space, put up a tent and, and do some stuff and which we, we continue to do anyway in San Jose. Uh, so there are ways to continue moving forward in art, um, despite lack of dedicated funding.
Indeed. Um, and thank you, Councilmember. I do appreciate your answer. And I think that, uh, everybody benefits from culture, no matter what. I would like to, uh, I would like to ask both of you, David and Lon, if you would be okay with us going maybe a few minutes over the hour, because we do have about five questions from the general public, maybe six, uh, they're coming in. And we'd like to get through all of them if we can. We'll go in order of what has come in first. Uh, and I think because I started with David, Amanda, do you wanna ask the next, the first question from the public?
Yeah.
Ask Councilmember Lon?
Yes, I can move forward with that. So, um, first question, uh, is what will you do to promote the arts to understand youth within San Jose?
What will I do to promote the?
Underserved.
Sorry, underserved youth in San Jose.
Yeah, um, I think from a city perspective, we rely a lot on nonprofits and we have nonprofit partners. Every council, uh, office has a, a, a grant budget, uh, that is, uh, generously offered to us from the SAP Center. Um, and, and we frequently give out grants, uh, to support, uh, those sort of things. So, uh, summer programs with the Boys and Girls Club, um, and, and whatever else, uh, you know, a lot of nonprofits come and, and they have all sorts of, uh, purposes. And I, I, I am always supportive of those when they come across my desk. Um, and, and, you know, if you're a nonprofit or, or something, reach out and, and you know, you're always good for at least something for my office, at least until. you're always good for at least something for my office, at least until I, I exhaust the fund.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. And David?
Yeah, I mean, these, this is the kind of program that's really good for our, for, for a lot of the community center programs in the summer and after school programs that we have in the city. A lot of those after school programs occur at schools and we should be putting those programs into, you know, making sure those programs are available in, in parts of the city that haven't had access to those programs. Make sure that, that in the summer, some of those programs are, are focused on art and culture. And, and in addition to obviously the, the technology programs that, that are offered in summer school and, and community center programs. I think that the city, you know, just like the city does in-class workshops, you know, bringing in people into schools to do programs, what, you know, when students are actually back in school again. Or, you know, field trips and opportunities to bring people on maybe a cultural tours of San Jose. I think that might be really, a really good thing to offer, you know, a place for students to go and learn about various communities in the city and bring students on, on those kinds of trips, just like this, you know, students are brought to San Jose State University to learn about that kind of thing. Students can be brought to various cultural centers to see art installations, to be brought to an art gallery or to the art museum as, as a school program or have arts brought to them. You know, I, I, we were fortunate that one of my children had a, had an opera performance brought to their school as a, as a program, that we can have the city help fund some assemblies for students, for, for cultural exposure.
Great. Thank you both. Mike?
Yes, we have a question. It's an anonymous submission. And the question is, "The art created by our local artists attracts people to San Jose, its businesses and venues. It raises the value of property and offers equal access for all. Is there any consideration for creating affordable housing specifically dedicated to local artists to better retain them and their talents, similar to affordable housing for teachers, families and seniors?" Is this an idea that you would entertain? I'll, I'll start with you, David.
Sure, I mean, should be entertained. I mean, we, we, we've talked in about affordable housing specifically for teachers. We've talked about affordable housing specifically for certain kinds of employees. And there should be affordable housing options for, for artists in residence or even spaces for artists to have studios, right? Some kind of studio-based affordable spaces where artists can live and work if they don't have, if they can't afford to rent a space in a, in a traditional location because of the expense. So, I mean, I think the city should look into things like that. I mean, our, our big problem and we, you know, obviously this is not the forum for discussion of affordable housing issues, but our big problem as a city, I think, is how far behind we are in, in building affordable housing. And if we were able to keep up with our need and of building affordable housing, we could begin to have these discussions about how we tailor some of that affordable housing for some of these niche needs, which I think are very important for a city's fabric. Unfortunately, we're so far behind on the needs in affordable housing. It's pretty hard to begin to, to earmark some of that housing for some of these specific needs.
And how would you respond to that?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't disagree with anything that the question or the premise of the question. I, I agree wholeheartedly with it and I, and I've seen it work. I, I know that, you know, I, I lived for a spell in New Orleans and we, there they have artist housing. And then I've visited, I've seen it, you know, villages where, you know, musicians are there and, you know, they're teaching music to the, the neighborhood kids. And there's like a music school and, you know, artists who actually paint and, and do interesting things with chemicals. And there's, there's a lot of energy there. And, and as a council member, as somebody who's lived in that area, I, I try to look for opportunities to bring that kind of thing to, to San Jose. And, but San Jose is a different beast. It's a different animal. We, we are trying to do things for affordable housing, for, for teachers and, you know, frontline workers and essential workers. And once you start going into this, this, this list of, of, not exceptions, but, but categories where you get preference, it, it, it becomes rather difficult because we're just trying to solve this, this question of affordable housing overall. And now, and now we're looking for affordable housing for artists and also teachers and, and victims of domestic violence and so on and so forth. And, and at what point do you build enough? Because we could build it, but it might just be a, a complex of like ten studios. And, and, and what does that do? So it's, it's an interesting question. I, I agree with the, the premise. But, but we're, we're in a tight spot in San Jose. So, but, but yes, I, I would entertain that and I'd move forward as part of some sort of package if, if we ever get to the point where we're, you know, prioritizing certain categories.
I would only say that if we're aspirational, then the answer is yes. I mean, we want to be like New Orleans someday. It's just that we have a ways to go to get to that point where we can reach that aspiration, right?
Thank you both.
All right. So next question. When we say 1% for the arts, I think it's important that really it's 1% for the arts in our creative sector, a little less considering materials, et cetera. To even be more specific, what if the arts becomes a vehicle to paint murals about civic participation resources that is multilingual, multicultural, increased music therapy, socially distant concerts in local neighborhoods, to fund performing arts filming to be broadcasted on our local government channel, et cetera? Thoughts on artists, the arts to help mobilize the revitalization for our economy and community health benefits? What are your thoughts? To revitalize our economy and community health benefits through the arts and artists?
I, I guess I'll go. I'm not sure who's term is, but.
Sorry.
I, I, I wholeheartedly support that. I, I do think, like I said, you know, we're, we're sheltering in place. Arts has this community building effect and it is the social glue that draws us out. If you could remember a few years ago, we had the, I forget what it was called, but the musical swings.
Yes.
In, in downtown San Jose, right? So that was a draw. People came from all over the city to, to go see that and to be a part of it. It was interactive.
Thousands of people.
And, and, you know, that's something that travels around the world. I, I've, you know, been, I forget where, but, you know, I saw another swing somewhere else. And, and so that's a get for San Jose. I, I, and certainly when I travel to other cities, I, I, you know, I've been to forty-eight states. I've, I've been to a lot of countries. And the, the, the murals that I see, you know, in the Bronx, you see a mural of Justice Sotomayor or, or in New York, I forget what part of New York, but there's a, you know, a mural of Biggie. And, and you, you see this up and it's interesting, it's engaging, it creates a sense of place and, and culture. And I, I totally want to see that for San Jose. And I don't pretend to understand the, the mechanics of what goes into that. You know, the cost of the art and all that. I, I do sense that there's some sort of hurdle with finding the, the, what's it called, the pallet or the wall? Like somebody has to offer the side of their building for that. And how to do that to reflect the local community? You know, steps away from City Hall, we have a barber shop and on the side of their parking lot, that building there, there's a mural of, of, you know, people getting their haircut. So we do have some of it. And, and I guess what surprised me and I found really encouraging was after the, the Black Lives Matter protest came to San Jose, you know, a lot of businesses downtown boarded up their windows. But on those boards were, where it was murals and art and, and, you know, inclusive messaging. And, and so that, that spark is there in San Jose. And, and I, and I believe that we can move more and kind of foster that and encourage it. And I certainly agree that, you know, having those, seeing those downtown, as I drive into City Hall, makes San Jose, although we're, they're empty streets right now because of COVID, it, it makes it, give a special vibe to our city. If, if there was just one, one thing that I would say, I feel that a lot of the murals that we've had lately, even before COVID, you know, you had the, the sharks thing by the, the Whole Foods. And then there was downtown, there's that huge wall with the hundred and one murals put together. Everything that we're doing or a lot of these that we're doing mentioned San Jose. And, and I don't know why we need to do that. It's, it's an interesting psychology that a lot of our murals somehow, you know, try to sell us on the San Jose pride. And, and I mean that in contrast to say Austin, Texas, where you're going down there. And there's just these random murals that just say like, I love you so much. And, and that's all it is. It's just an interesting quote or a thought and then people line up and take photos in front of it. And, and I'm not sure what it says about our psychology in San Jose that everything, we had to kind of brand like rah 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 San Jose. So I, I hope that we get to a, a level of art or, or, you know, I don't know if it's maturity or what, but somewhere on the spectrum where we're just putting art out there, this thought provoking and encouraging and inspiring and not trying to brand the sense of San Jose so much. Because it, it, it's weird to me personally.
Thank you. I appreciate that. David?
In the, in the spirit of brevity being the soul of wit, I'll just say that I, I really liked that question. And I actually think, you know, in this, i- i- in terms of, of recovering from, from our current situation, it is going to be important to begin to get people to participate in art and, and have places where they can go to see some live performance again. So I do look forward to talking to people like the person who wrote that question about ways to stage that. I, I, because, because I think, you know, we've talked a lot about sort of the mural art, the static art, which is really important for a sense of place. But the stuff, the things that I miss are being able to go to the CMT and being able to go to the Performing Arts Center. And we, we know we can't do that for a little while in turn, in its traditional way. But, but I, I'm hearing, I keep hearing rumblings of creative ideas about how we start doing performing arts again in other ways. And I, and I really look forward to, to having that conversation about how we begin to stage some things to get people to be able to do some creative things, not just because it's good for people in the city to be able to, to see it, but also because it's good for artists to be able to express it and perform it.
We have, we have two, we have two more questions here and I would like us to try to get to both of them. This next question, and we'll start with David and then we'll move on to councilmember Deep. The question is, "Climate change is a big topic at City Hall. However, there seems to be precious little progress being made. Successful climate change policies seem to necessitate a cultural change. How do you think the city can change the cultural attitudes and habits surrounding climate change? Do you see a role for the arts in this issue?"
Interesting question. I mean, I, climate change is probably the most important issue for me. I mean, I, I, I see myself as being, you know, as hoping to be a leader on this issue and have a lot of, you know, important thoughts about things we can do better as a city and better as a community, as a community and bringing people together county and regionally, in, within the county and regionally in order to solve this problem. I hadn't really thought about a role arts-wise, but I, I mean, I think, you, you know, the arts has always been a leader in terms of how we communicate with one another, how we, how we message issues, you know, things like poetry and song and, and. So I, I mean, clearly, I, you, you know, the, that kind of messaging will be important in how our culture, how our country, how our, our community gets the word about changing habits, right? I mean, it's because, because addressing climate change is, is partly about the things we can do as a, as a community which force change, right? We can electrify our, our infrastructure. We can, we can do things that, you know, keep our, keep our, keep people's behaviors the same, but change the, the carbon emission as a result of that, retrofitting buildings and changing the, the, you know, the way we are generating our electricity. But also there's behavioral changes, the way we eat, the way we commute, the way we, you know, move things around, the way we shop. A lot of things have to change and, and I think that message can be done by, you know, legislation. We try to force, you know, we, we reduce and reuse. We try to force, you know, reduction of plastics and stuff, people stop using Styrofoam and straws and all those things. But it, it could be, you know, there's a role for art too. I mean, a, a big mural that talks about, you know, plastics and waste and, and, and poetry and song that, 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 that gives, sends out the right messages about the improvement of, of our, you know, benefits to our planet, of the behavioral changes could be, could be an important role. And, and maybe we could enlist some of our arts community in, in helping with those messages as we move forward. It's, it's an interesting idea and I do like, like the thought.
Thank you, David. Councilmember Deep?
Yeah, so I, you know, the question is right. We, we have done a lot or, or climate change is a topic du jour at, at City Hall. And, and I'm happy, you know, very proud to be a part of the efforts we've done at, at San Jose City Hall to combat climate change. There's more to do. But in, in my short tenure here, we've implemented San Jose Clean Energy, moving the entire city, businesses and residential users to an eighty percent renewable energy source. And if you pay a little bit extra each month, you can get a hundred percent renewable energy. That goes a long way. We've passed reach codes that encourage buildings of all sorts to move to more sustainable building and conserving energy. We've made it so that all the residential buildings will have to be all electric moving forward. So, you know, tapping back into San Jose clean energy and, and using our renewable energy sources, moving away from natural gas. And, and we have a, you know, smart climate plan in, in San Jose to encourage people to conserve and, and to do our part to become carbon neutral. And, and most certainly, there, there is a, a way for art and artists to be involved in this. Because, you know, that, that list of things that I just shared with you, you may or may not know about. That, that it's a very bureaucratic thing. It, you know, gets put out in a press release or it gets voted on at a meeting that, that happens during a time that most people are at work. It may or may not be on the evening news. And art is a way to communicate that thing in a, in a visual medium and an auditory medium i- in ways that connect to residents that, that I can't connect through on my Facebook page or on my Twitter account. And so, and we have been using artists in that. I know ESD, I forget exactly what they did, but they were handing something out. And instead of just the regular tag with the instructions, they had a designer, a graphic designer come and draw like a little cartoon about, about how this works. And it, it was a way of kind of overcoming the, the language barrier even, to, to explain environmental concepts to, to residents who may not speak English. So I, I think there's certainly a role there and, and a way to, to use that. I mean, even on this MySanJose app, when we're, we're trying to get multilingual access, so people can point to illegal dumping or broken streetlights. There, I've been pushing as a, the Chair of the Smart Cities Committee to get that team working on that, to move away from, you know, menu buttons and, and, and language buttons, but really to move towards icons that are more universal. And, and that would require art and, and somebody with a visual eye to do that. And, and, you know, trying to push for access and language access and inclusion, I think having an artist really much, really helps with that.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you. So we're on our last question. And it's kind of more based on what the, the audience asked. So what is one thing you've heard tonight from the audience that you'd like to learn more about or discuss, have for the conversation about? And, yeah, I think we'll start with David.
Well, there've been, there've been several things I think that are pretty exciting. I mean, obviously the, the, you know, we've talked a little bit about the artists in residence idea. We've talked a little bit about ways that art, artists can, can help communicate important ideas to the public. We've talked about restarting the art scene in creative ways. And, you know, none of these things are things that, that a city council should be sitting around talking about. These are things that the arts, that should be initiated out of the arts world and from people who are the artists, they should be brought to the city. I mean, it makes me a little uncomfortable actually to be answering these kinds of questions, right? I mean, these aren't the kind of questions that, that somebody running for council or sitting on a council day should be proposing. These are the kind of things that we should be listening to all of you in the arts community and, and then saying, yes, let's try things. Let's, let's put together an office that is meant to experiment and try. You know, we, we're not the artists ourselves. We're there to, to, to fund and listen and be, and, and allow people to, to have a creative space to do things. So I, I think there's a variety of things that are, are exciting. The, the important thing about this forum is really for, you know, for the audience to get to know who we are and, you know, learn that we're accessible and want to talk to you and want to learn about your ideas so that, so that we, you know, can, can advocate for your needs. Because, you know, not only do we, you know, not only do I believe that arts are important and always have, but, you know, I, I think, you know, it's a lot more complicated in a city than it is in how you teach art in schools, right? I mean, it's, it's a, they're, they're, a vibrant city is one that is organic in its art scene, right? It is one where arts are growing out of the people, not one that's a top-down dictated art, right? Art, art has always been about what's new and unexpected, not what's planned. So we just need to figure out how to create space in a city like San Jose to have a vibrant art scene and, and allow for something new and, and unique to, to form here so that San Jose will be known as a place with something unique.
And councilmember?
So, so the question was, what was the, we only had five audience questions, so I'm not sure what, who we're selecting from. But if I, if I can broaden the scope of it to not just the audience questions, but.
Yeah, totally. Go for it.
We were discussing all night. We were discussing all night. I I think that I I would be interested in entertaining this this notion of a artist in residence at the city. One, I mean, not one in every department, but but certainly I can appreciate the value of having, you know, a visual thinker, you know, try to help the the city communicate with our residents in a more engaging way. And I I I can't and I probably I won't commit to to a permanent ongoing source or as an ongoing forever program. But in in the spirit of what we've been doing in San Jose, where we've had, you know, somebody who was a city architecture, the city architect come in to help design the downtown skyline and kind of redo all that. And then that person phased out because the funding ran out. You know, I I could commit to looking for funding for for a one year position for somebody to come in and see how it goes. And you know, if if our theories bear out and there's a value add, then we can look at other revenue sources and to keep it ongoing. But I do think that whoever this this person would be kind of has an argument to make or a case to prove as to the value of this in terms of, you know, city government and and providing services to residents. But yeah, I I think there's ways to, there's always ways to piece together a one year. You know, what funding for a position for one year? And then I would, you know, be open to talking more with your advocates and then to kind of figure that out.
Great. Thank you. You guys have been fantastic. We really appreciate you spending the evening with us and talking to us about the arts and how they can really be involved with the city of San Jose and with the district and with your district in North San Jose. I just wanted to do a quick clarification on the the hotel tax breakdown before we move forward. I had misspoken, but it's, I got most of it right, but forty percent to the general fund, thirty percent to Team San Jose, fifteen percent to Team San Jose for the CDB and then fifteen percent to the OCA Grant Administration. So a little closer, but just wanted to clarify that for our audience as well. So I think from that, just want to say thank you again and for staying on longer with us. We appreciate it. We are so excited to actually be able to move forward and talk to you both about the arts. And we did have more questions in the chat box, so we can send those to both of you through email. If you want to provide us any feedback and comments, we can send to to through to our audience members. I'm going to finish off with a couple of points. So thank you for joining us today. We hope you'll visit sounds the arts advocates.org and sign up for our email list to keep up with our work and get involved. You can follow us on social media at San Jose Arts. Don't forget to check your voter registration, registervote.ca.gov. You can register right up to Election Day online and at any vote center. If you're registered to vote in Santa Clara County, you'll receive a ballot in the mail at the address on file with the registrar of voters around the first week of October. You do not need to include postage on your ballot for USPS to return it. So just make sure that you sign the envelope. This is how they verify that it's your ballot. You can also deliver your ballot to the ROV in person or drop it in one of more than one hundred drop boxes throughout the county. So you can get answers to all these questions and more at SCCvote.org. We want to make sure people get out there and vote this fall. So thank you again, everyone, and we hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you.
David, thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you, candidates.